Could you also release Mr. Gross and Mr. Outhouse, please?
Certainly.
And I do not know why Phil is also on that list because he's on the participants list also. So I don't know what that's all about.
Um, yeah, I'm not seeing.
Phil Armstrong, Joe.
Yeah, I know. He's on, he's on the list already, Phil.
Well, I think that he doesn't have um audio on the device that is not showing him as having an audio.
Okay, I see a microphone, but it's muted right now.
Like, it should have like a little headphone symbol.
Yeah, it does.
Philip Armstrong shouldn't be.
Yes.
Yes.
And the other Phil is, I'm, I'm not sure who that is.
I believe it's Mr. Armstrong. I believe he got on three times. I don't think he had his audio correct. He probably did. Mr. Armstrong, you there?
I am.
Okay, good to hear.
All right, can you, uh, sorry, Joe. I had a little trouble going through my computer here to get it going.
That's all, you're not the only one. This happens all the time, Phil.
That's all right. Why I started early.
I guess we're just me, we're waiting for Mr. Jandall or the Jandalls.
Oh, here we have Mark Jandall.
Yeah, can you please unlock him, Melissa?
Yes.
How are you, Mr. Jandall? Mr. Jandall, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, do you have any other participants from the family? Are you going to be the only one attending?
Uh, Zach may be joining us um in a little bit.
Okay. Do you mind if we start without him?
Not at all.
Okay, no problem. Well, I'm gonna light this candle. I'd like to bring the Whitehall Township. Excuse me?
Um, well, a little feedback so that everyone who's not speaking could just mute their themselves.
Okay, I'd like to bring the Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners Special Meeting, June twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, to order. Uh, first, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic of Canada.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, free and just.
Okay, I'd like to also have a moment of silence for our military, our first responders, and the people of Ukraine. Thank you. Now I have to read the HUD disclaimer. Whitehall Township has an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and to review all land use applications in accordance with federal civil rights statutes. This includes taking meaningful actions that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. The township and its land use decisions does not discriminate against persons based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, or familiar status, and reviews all land use applications in accordance with federal civil rights statutes. Public comments made on the basis of bias and stereotype concerning people within these protected classes will not be taken into consideration by the township in its deliberations. With that being said, I am gonna call courtesy of the floor, just because it's required in a public meeting. So I'm opening the floor to courtesy. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Michael Herickel, Whitehall Township Mayor. Mayor, I'm handing the ball to you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Um, and we are here to get information relevant to the Riverside Drive multimodal project. Um, we have, I thank everybody we need in the room so we can get good information in a timely fashion. Uh, this is one of the, the most significant um federal infusions of of money into Lehigh County and the Lehigh Valley. So um let's get to somebody who can help us out, and I believe uh, the first one to speak uh would be Tracy Askovich.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Tracy Askovich. I am with the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. I'm the Director of Administration um with the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. And I'm just trying to get my notes here. Sorry, one second for me. Okay. So, um, do I have the power to advance slides, or do I just need to tell somebody to hit next?
You can just tell me to hit next, yeah.
Okay, you, you can go ahead and start. Okay, so just a little bit of background for everyone. Um, this project Riverside Drive Multimodal Revitalization Corridor uh is a three and a half mile stretch of of the former rail line. Um, and you can see it on the screen there. It's the dotted yellow line. It starts down uh on Hamilton Street and heads north to just about Race Street. Um, and this project has been something that we've been working on for six years now. Um, we have been pursuing uh additional funding into the Lehigh Valley Transportation Funding. Um, it, through the form of a discretionary grant. This program used to be called Tiger um way back in the day. Uh, now it's called, then it was called Build. Uh, and now it's called Raise, and that's a stance for rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. So uh this past year uh in twenty twenty one, we uh we went after the grant again um with um, you know, an advanced scope. As, as we moved through the, the past six years, the project changed slightly. And what I mean by that is that um there was parts of this project that had funding and that were moving forward. So Element Two um and Element One are not really what we're gonna be talking about tonight. Um, most of the funding from this grant is going into Element Three. Um, which is, the grant we were awarded is twenty one point two million dollars. Right now, the match to that is thirteen point eight million. Um, and that's gonna be provided by the Waterfront Development Company in the form of 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 the value of the land. Uh, previously incurred cost to date is thirty six point eight million, making the total project cost seventy one point four million dollars. Um, this project is transformative. Um, it um, it's gonna be a two lane thoroughfare paired with a ten foot hiking and biking trail from Hamilton Street in Allentown to just north of Route twenty two at Wood Street where um in, in Whitehall Township. It will then continue north with a paved pathway, hopefully, and a bicycle commuter and unpaved pathway for recreational users, which will separate those two modes. Um, the roadway and trail components incorporate green infrastructure design throughout the project. And this project is one of the highest priorities in future LV the Regional Plan, which is our bi-county comprehensive plan and our long range transportation plan. It is a critical connecting connection uh supporting freight management, congestion management, safer vehicle transit and pedestrian and bicycle connections from the highway system to adjoining job centers. The project reclaims um a vacant rail corridor uh and it becomes the centerpiece for more than four hundred million dollar brownfield redevelopment project um, which is the waterfront in the city of Allentown. The project will connect residents, commuters, recreational trail users, tourists uh from established commercial, commercial and mixed use developments to the new cultural and recreational and smart growth redevelopment projects occurring along Allentown's waterfront. Um, and it will provide a safe and ADA accessible route. Uh, you can hit, uh, go ahead and, and move on to the next slide. Uh, just some facts about the area. Um, as you can see, this is kind of a zoomed out version of uh, or zoomed out view of, of the project because this is, this has such a big regional impact. Uh, we wanted to show you all the different ways that it's connecting. Um, so you can see Riverside Drive there uh uh with the, the yellow line and the adjacent areas through which it's gonna connect all the modes that we've, that I previously mentioned. Um, so just some, a couple demographic things for you guys to consider here. Um, the two census tracts that are in Whitehall, which are fifty seven point oh two and fifty seven point oh three, um, have uh mobility challenges. Um, you have ten to ten and a half percent of your residents in poverty there, between nine point four and sixteen point eight of your, of your residents um with disabilities. On six point three nine to seven point five nine uh without a vehicle, percent without a vehicle. And just those two census tracts that this project is, it runs through. So Route twenty two essentially divides these two tracts and is one of the largest fiscal barriers in the entire project. Uh, sidewalk, bikeways, uh they're largely non-existent and transit access is limited and runs only east to west. Uh, this project will help alleviate that. Overall, the project will provide a reduced crash cost savings value of fifty one point seven two million over a fifty year period. Um, and we got that number through a benefit cost analysis that we did with a company called HNTV. Um, the project will provide travel time savings for bicycle, pedestrian, and automotive users. By the year twenty thirty six, automobile users will have avoided four hundred forty one thousand five hundred and ninety two vehicle hours traveled a year, uh creating a savings of thirteen point two million a year. Bicycle pedestrians will have avoided ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy one hours a year with a savings of two point nine million. This time, the cost savings for all you, at this time, the cost saving for all users determined by the benefit cost analysis will provide relief both financially by connecting transit stops and routes, opening new sidewalks, bikeways, and vehicleways that connect to the key destinations in the region. Essentially, the Riverside Drive Project organizes the transportation system, making it safer, truly multimodal, and ultimately equitable. The enhanced multimodal network will provide a bridge linking lower density exurban and rural, rural parts of this area to urban and suburban via this off-road commuter option. Benefits of the connections from the road and trail include increased access to business services as well as greater mobility from public transportation options along the proposed project vicinity. The project serves to reduce commuting burdens and provide more uh multimodal travel options with greater access for pedestrians, walkers, rollers, and transit. Um, and just to summarize, the fifty year period that was analyzed for the benefit cost analysis determined that um reduced travel time savings for pedestrians and bicycles was twenty four point sixty five million. Reduced travel time savings for automobile users is ninety nine point seventy million. Uh, and reduced crash cost savings is fifty one point seventy two million, and that affects everyone. That affects your residents, that affects the municipality EMS, uh county, um, i- it affects everyone. Those are pretty large numbers. Um. Uh, Becky, did I miss anything on this opening section here?
Um, I think the important point is, is the first slide that we had showed Element Three, which is the majority of the project area, um, which is in Whitehall. And so that does represent um the investment, uh the majority of that new investment through the grant. Um, and I think in the next slide, one of the key things about protected open space, because this closes the largest gap in the Delaware and Lehigh National Heritage Corridor Trail, which is also the nine eleven Memorial Trail. So that nine eleven memorial trail will connect from uh the World Trade Center site uh all the way out to Western Pennsylvania where the um uh flight uh crashed on, on nine eleven, two thousand and one. Um, so it has a national significance. Uh, and they've co-located it with the Delaware and Lehigh National Heritage Corridor Trail, which also has natural, national significance in several uh different, different ways uh for, you know, hair, our, our coal heritage and timber heritage and transportation heritage and, and other things, as, as you well know. It is one of the highest priority trail gaps to close um for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as well. So there's, you know, widespread um state support uh for this project is, is well. Um, and why that matters, and I'll show you a couple of slides of why that matters, but how it can also benefit Whitehall. You have a really nice mix of uh commercials, some industrial, a lot of houses in that stretch uh along Riverside Drive, which is co-located again with the, with the trail. Um, those homes, we per, we do analyses and, and back in twenty fourteen, we did an analysis, see how much um how, how, how values were affected by proximity to parks, recreation, and open space. And what we quantified is that at a minimum, um, a house located within a quarter mile of a, of a trail facility, a park facility, had an average premium added to it of fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and we didn't pull that number out of the air. We actually analyzed uh sales data from the counter, county recorder's office to determine that. So it is a real number. So that means that then with the addition of this new park trail facility, well, trail facility, um, you'll be able to actually help increase property values, which then increase uh tax revenue into the township. And in the next slide, uh, we also do public opinion surveys uh about every two, two to three years or so. Um, and the last one we did right before the pandemic, um asked folks to prioritize different things in the community as important or very important. Um, and then so on and so forth. This slide in the yellow arrows show all of the things that the Riverside Drive Project actually supports in terms of public opinion. So natural resources protection, roads and bridge maintenance, and increase of transportation infrastructure to meet growing demand and growing business and uh population. Uh, economic development, over ninety five, over ninety five percent of respondents, and it was a statistically valid survey, said that this was very important, important or very important to the region. And then between ninety and ninety five percent of res- uh respondents said that, you know, revitalization of uh lands and recapturing um uh the value of lands that maybe had been uh to a higher and better use in the past, but providing that opportunity now was critical, along with emergency services access. One of the key things that this project does, um, and, and this actually comes from, from Whitehall um and in your emergency management services providers, is there's a number of people that go out and have a great time uh out on the Lehigh River in their kayaks, in their canoes, um, they're floating down the river. Um, and they have to do a lot of rescues, as you're well aware. Um, they need better access uh to this area of the Lehigh. This trail will provide uh that. In addition, eighty to ninety percent of respondents to our survey um said that social, cultural, and recreational um opportunities were important, as well as having more transportation options. Ways to get out of your car or ways to mix your trips. We actually designated a Delaware and Lehigh National Hor- Heritage Corridor or nine eleven memorial trail as an off-road commuter corridor that then connects to all of the roads that connect into it throughout the Lehigh Valley, providing an.
Can I interrupt for a moment? Can I interrupt for a moment? You dropped out about five to seven seconds of what you were saying.
Um, can you help me out and tell me what you heard? I, I said that.
Um.
It's sorry.
I, I don't know exactly what the, what it was. But it had to do, I think initially with uh uh reading through the public survey, uh and I don't remember what the last thing was that you said, Becky.
Okay. Um, well, I'll just do a real quick summary. Um, if I cut out, again, Tracy, will you teams message me real quick so I'll know? Um, okay. Uh, so natural resources, roads and bridge maintenance uh as well as economic development opportunities, especially connections to existing uh economic engines like the Whitehall Mall um are critically important to uh our region. And our things that uh folks in the Lehigh Valley told us over ninety five percent considered important or very important. Then ninety to ninety five percent, not too much less, said that revitalization of places or bringing back uh places that maybe had a higher and better use in the past, but providing those opportunities now was important. That emergency management services connection, and again, this came from uh the Whitehall EMS, was super important um because of all the people having fun out on the Lehigh River of boating and uh kayaking and taking their canoes out and the like. There's a, a need to have better uh water access for emergency management, and this trail would provide that. And then the last two, where eighty to ninety percent of respondents said important or very important to them, was providing new social, cultural, and recreational opportunities, as well as transportation options. And transportation options is a really good one for this project because it provides that mix between modes. So you can go out and be on a trail for recreation, have fun. Um, but you also can use it to commute to work, and there's a growing number of people that want those options um to, to take trips, not just for pleasure, but also to run errands uh to go and do things that they need to do, which, as you know, Whitehall has plenty of those options that would connect to this. So I believe in the next slide, um, we start talking about uh what the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study, and that can be confusing because Tracy and I both work for the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Uh, but it is the sister agency of the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study. So the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study is federally designated. It's a metropolitan planning organization for transportation planning and then investment that goes along with that. And we do that with uh the LVTS members, which include, there's several on this call, which include the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Mike Rebert from Penn Dot District Five Exec is our Vice Chair of the Coordinating Committee, um as well as Rick Mulchany from uh Lehigh County and Phil Armstrong. Uh, they are also on uh the Coordinating Committee, but there are other, other members, including um the three cities. The counties represent the townships in the boroughs, as well as the county as a whole and themselves. Um, Weir have one vote at the LVPC, Lanta and the Airport Authority. Um, and then Penn Dot has two votes and uh Lehigh County, Lehigh County has three votes and North Hampton County has three votes. So at the, the end of the day, we make significant investments based on future LV the Regional Plan into the region. And that's based on a whole host of metrics. It's not a, a financial free for all. Um, but there are a lot of different buckets of money that can only be used for specific things, like bridge maintenance on roads that are replacement on roads that are uh highly traveled. Uh, well, you have a lot of the facilities that qualify for those funds. This uh first slide in a series of four is gonna show you what the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study has chosen as regional priorities in Whitehall Township and how we've invested and plan to invest through twenty twenty six. Um, first of all, uh, we worked with um with uh Lee Racus and others uh to get a multimodal um study for MacArthur Road to see how pedestrian access and crosswalks and other things could could uh uh be worked out along that corridor. That was a two hundred and sixty thousand um dollar investment. The cement and bridge project, which began back in twenty nineteen, um and is anticipated to go um through uh this next transportation improvement period, which is around twenty twenty six. Uh, that obviously improve uh involves the replacement of that very important bridge carrying State Route three twenty nine over the Lehigh. That's a twenty two million dollar investment in Whitehall that is underway right now. Uh, the Lehigh Street Tri-Bridge, uh you know, that's two bridge replacements, um, which is a removal of the Lehigh Street Bridge over the Ironton Rail Trail. Um, and that we also known as uh, and that came together um between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty. That was another twenty one point seven five million dollar investment in Whitehall. The Cold Springs Bridge replaced, obviously, the bridge over uh that spring on Second Street, which is State Route uh ten twenty seven. Um, and that was a three point nine two eight million dollar investment in Whitehall uh between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty. In the next slide, we have um the Fifth Street Bridge. Uh, obviously, you guys have been in, involved with a series of improvements uh at MacArthur Road along twenty two and at Fullerton Avenue interchange, so you know quite a bit about the Fifth Street Bridge. Um, that project is funded now um and in the process of, as you, as you're aware, design. That's over a nine point one three million dollar investment to take a local road, which is not technically necessary under federal rules and regulations, but we felt strongly about it, just like you did, and were able to go and fight to get that project funding um through the state and, and federal sources. So that's one that was really optional for our region, and we decided to make that investment in you because of the importance of that bridge to local traffic. Uh, US twenty two, that's Section four hundred, um, that reconstructs uh that twenty two of Fullerton Avenue interchange. Um, there are some things underway with that now. It's had to been divided up into several pieces. But overall, that is a ninety six million dollar investment in Whitehall Township. That represents the largest investment in the last ten years into any community in the Lehigh Valley. There's some resurfacing um that uh you're aware of that'll be going on on MacArthur Road. Uh, uh, MacArthur Road from Great Street to, to three twenty nine, that's another six point seven million dollars to maintain that important facility. And then there's also some Route twenty two resurfacing uh that's uh occurred and is occurring, and that's another fourteen point eight million dollar investment in the township. Next. The MacArthur Road Signal Upgrade. Obviously, this is important to the mobility and business community um in Whitehall, which is important to our whole region. That's another one point six million dollars, and that's been ongoing since twenty nineteen. And then there's Race Street over the Lehigh River. Um, and that uh, that, that bridge, um, it looks like uh it's, you know, gonna have some repairs and some repaving. Uh, that's seven point one million dollars. Um, and then the Seventh Street uh multimodal corridor, there's obviously improvements along Stri- Sixth Street, including minor widening, the addition of a northbound turn lane onto State Route one forty five or MacArthur Road, and the addition of a sidewalk. Um, there'll be a traffic signal at Sixth Street and MacArthur Road, Mickley Road to be updated to accommodate uh proposed turning lanes that the township has been very interested in uh having done. That's another almost six or seven point seven million dollars. And then State Route one forty five over the Jordan Creek, um, that would include widening of that bridge uh to three lanes in each direction from Fairmont Avenue to Jordan Parkway, obviously another very important project that started back in twenty nineteen and is ongoing. That's another four point five uh million dollars uh currently. So all of this investment in just Whitehall Township. Uh, and in the next slide, it summarizes that is a hundred and ninety five uh six hundred and twenty thousand and forty seven dollars. So almost two hundred million dollars in the last uh, in this, this current uh ten year cycle has been invested in the township. If you add the Raise Grant in, which we competed nationwide for that Raise Grant, and I think that's a very, very, very important point. We had to compete with the California Department of Transportation, with the City of Philadelphia, the City of New York, Houston, Texas. We had to compete with the entire United States of America. Took us six years, but collectively, and Whitehall has been at the table the entire six years in all of the project meetings. Um, we were able to then get that twenty one point one five eight million dollar Raise Grant. So you add that in because that majority of that and vast majority of that investment goes into Whitehall. That takes the total investment of public funds by regional, state, and federal agencies into Whitehall to two hundred and sixteen million, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand forty seven dollars, representing an unprecedented um investment in the important uh community uh that that we're, we're obviously presenting to today. Um, I believe in the next slide, we're gonna pass it over to Executive Armstrong.
Okay, uh, before I say anything, does anybody have any questions they would like to ask Be- Becky or Tracy? That was a lot of fantastic information, and I just wanna make sure they have time to ask you questions.
Yeah, just one comment that Phil Ginder, one of the commissioners of Whitehall. It, it was a lot of money put in over ten years, but you know, you gotta look back. There was no money shoved into Whitehall for many, many years, and that's how these, these roads and bridges fell so far behind. We're thankful for what we got. But, you know, things in Whitehall were left gone, uh by the way, for there for about twenty, thirty years, but I just. But, you know, things in Whitehall were left gone, uh by the way, for there for about twenty, thirty years, but I just wanna make that comment. Uh but the other comment is we're thankful for it. I'm out.
Okay, well, you know, what I wanna a comment on, first of all, you know, I'm, I'm. Former Commissioner of Whitehall Township and former Board President. When I took over in the county, uh it's been five years where. I have been working with Becky Bradley and Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Lobbying. Uh I was very fortunate to be chosen to be on the Executive Board of County Executives of America. Every time I was in Washington, even in the White House last December. All I did was lobby for this project. This is, I think, one of the most valuable things to come to Whitehall Township. That I can remember and I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine. So and then I know some people have lived their entire lives, so that passes me up, but. Yeah, I, I'm not gonna get into that or Tom Sloneacre. I know he wants to say something, but I'll, I'll let that one go. But the idea of here of intermodal transportation. A couple of years ago, I met a group of bicyclers that were being escorted by the police. And I met them down near the Hamilton Street Bridge. They were the first group, and there were like twenty of them, that had left Washington DC. And were biking on the Freedom Trail. And it, it was such an embarrassment that the entire Freedom Trail, you can bus or bike. Except for three and a half miles from Whitehall into Allentown and they had to get a, a police escort. I have been talking with state officials and federal officials. And what this is going to do for the businesses in our area, mostly in Whitehall. What it's going to do for the fact of, you, you know, I do the trails often. And I know, Phil, uh you've been on the IRT Committee as a representative of the Board for years. This is something that we are so proud of, our trails, our rails to trails in Whitehall Township. Well, now we have a chance to interconnect our trails uh to get to Scranton, to Philadelphia. New York City. It, it's the, we are the missing link. Uh why I think this is important? Because it is going to, down the road, be such a benefit to the population in Whitehall Township. You all know that I'm from Whitehall, I think Whitehall. I've done all I can to promote this because I am. I have no doubt what's whatsoever. The last ten years, yes, Mr. Ginder, prior to that, maybe not. But let's take the last ten years and look at the investment we are doing now. And, and we continue to do it. And I don't want that to change. I want it to continue to be. How can we make Whitehall Township grow? And this fact that we can now ride our bikes to Philadelphia from Whitehall, believe me. There is such a population that when you bring this forward, and again, the RICE Grant. Becky is completely correct. I went to this last uh meeting. Uh I represent four states in regional planning. And we received an outstanding achievement award. You won't read about it in the morning call because it's a positive thing. So, nothing like that hits the morning call. But everybody, and as Becky said, Texas, California. The State of Washington, Oregon, every Illinois, Chicago. How did we get that grant? We were fighting above our heads, but the fact is, we didn't do the fight alone. We did it with private, public, everybody on board. Even Northampton County has supported us with this because this is gonna link us up to Northampton County's trails. So i- it, there's, there was no not a win here. This is just a fantastic thing. And I, I'm, like you said, all those facts that Tracy gave, down the road. Millions of dollars saved, millions of hours saved. W- we need to look down the road. Uh we need not to look back thirty years ago. But what are we doing for the next thirty years? And this, this is the project. I would not, I, believe me, I would not have been lobbying in Washington and Harrisburg and. Meeting Senator Casey and walking him up and down that trail and pleading with him for his help to get this. Uh if I didn't really believe this would be better than buttered bread as far as Whitehall is concerned. I think, and again, everything in this, the word equitable uh has to be brought out. Cause this does bring, as the survey showed, we spent a lot of money mapping out. All of the towns in Lehigh County, looking at where are there food discrepancies? Where are there people with transportation problems? Where and how can we meet their needs? And that's one of the biggest reasons we won that award. Because of that survey, we could then in the county say, where do we need to send our money? And yes, the county will definitely take over responsibility of any kind of maintenance on that trail. I'm willing to do that. I, I heard that it was some problems in Whitehall. They said, oh, we have another thing to maintain. Well. Look, if that's not the case, we will do it. I'll go out and weed whack it. I mean, I really, this is just. I could stand on top of the Empire State Building and scream, but I think Tracy and Becky gave you all of the facts. The home values going up, the, everything that it's going to be used for. Th- this is just an outstanding project. I would be, uh if I was on that board right now. Taking Tracy and Becky out to dinner and thanking them because, believe me, you have no idea how hard they have worked. And all the things they had to jump through hoops, and it didn't come just this year. We were so close three years ago and we lost out. We were so close two years ago. But they never gave up. They never gave up. And to make sure that Whitehall keeps getting what they need. This is why we're working hard together here. So, I, if you have any questions to me. I'd be glad to answer them, but I'm hoping you look at all of the things that this is gonna do for Whitehall. Definitely down the road, it will improve quality of life, make things equitable. This trail is just gonna be fantastic. Access to the river that some of our citizens have never had. So i- it's just a win-win. And imagine being able to take the trail to an Iron Pigs game. You know, you, you don't even have to get in your car. Take the trail, go down, ride your bike over, you're there. So lots of good reasons here.
If I could, Phil, just to also add, uh Whitehall Commissioners, Rick Mulchany, Director of General Services, County of Lehigh. Um part of our plan is not just the initial trail to Race Street. Uh as Phil and, and others have described. Um I've been working on the plan from Race Street North to Cementon. Which uh if we acquire that land from Norfolk Southern. Uh would increase uh the value of properties. Um from Race Street North to Cementon. The reality is, our goal in the county was to open up this trail, uh visualize the river. Uh we have in our current capital plan, four million dollars uh to invest in acquisition. Um and the, the engineering uh for that trail connection from Race Street to Cementon. We know there's a couple benefits there. Uh one of the benefits is to um. Allow someone who's traveling on the trail not to use the bridges, the Cementon Bridge or the Race Street Bridge or the Hamilton. Street Bridge uh as accessways. You'll be able to continue on the west side of the Lehigh. Commissioners, I also believe that uh with that, with that being said. Um the most dense area of the D and L in the Lehigh Valley. Um and probably from, from the, the great north to the Philadelphia market. Uh is in the Lehigh Valley and specifically inside the Lehigh Valley uh at Whitehall. So we know this is critical for us. At the same time, we are also completing some trail on the east side of the Lehigh River. Which for those who wish to do loops, can evaluate their, their trip on the trail. By traveling on one side of the Lehigh, using a bridge, pass over and then use the trail on the opposite side. Uh so that you're not doubling back. This is what we envision. Um and I think it's a really good plan, but it's contingent upon us getting that trail to Race Street. Uh if we don't get the trail to Race Street, uh our impacts will be using the Race Street Bridge and the Cementon Bridge and focus on the east side. So for me, it's, it's a critical component and a highly valuable property. Uh that we wanna continue to develop for trail. Um Commissioners, also, I think it's, we underestimated the value of the Hockendakwa Bridge. Not only did we replace the bridge, we created, and I think Frank was part of the engineering team uh that I worked with. Uh to create an opening uh to the old uh ironworks area. By doing this, we are now in a position uh to make private investment. And or public investments uh into that area, which can in fact create economic uh um. Uh opportunities. Certainly, it doesn't come easy. I know there's concerns about uh brown site development. But that's all on the table for discussion. Um in addition, the Fifth Street Bridge, when Becky mentioned for commuter uh and local community traffic. I lived in that neighborhood for ten years. Um I will tell you, that bridge is a very highly. Uh neighborhood-driven bridge, but the benefit is the Allentown Four Street to Whitehall Fifth Street. To get to the Lehigh Valley and Whitehall Mall. That was the majority of the traffic uh it threw my neighborhood at that time. So we understand calming the roads, uh investing in the Fifth Street Bridge. Investing in um MacArthur Road. Uh and I think investing in this neighborhood road that you're gonna hear a bit more about uh from the Penn Dot team. Um Whitehall Commissioners, there's no design on the road yet. We are asking Whitehall to be part of the team and actually create the design. Understanding things like maintenance, uh things like no trucks are all part of the design plan. So if I could ask you again, as you're going through the next section, which is the roadway discussion. Uh to understand, nothing's been completed in terms of the design. You have an opportunity to come to the table. And we're asking you to come to the table and assist us with the uh the roadway. And I think at this time, we'll probably turn it over to Christine, uh the Penn Dot Project Manager. Who could walk through some of the high-level discussions for the road.
Thanks, Rick. This is Christine Fry. I am the Consultant Project Manager for Penn Dot District Five. Um I wanna explain a little bit um about Penn Dot's role in all of this. Um the grant recipient was Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Um but uh Lehigh Valley Planning Commission's more focused on, on the entire valley. Um and as far as administering something of this magnitude, it's just beyond the scope of their capabilities. So. Penn Dot has agreed to be named the recipient for administrative purposes only. So I wanna make sure that everybody understands that. This is not a Penn Dot project. This is what we would deem a local project. And it's gonna be motivated and, and, and in the interest of the township, not, not Penn Dot's interests, not. It's not for us to decide, you know, what the um makeup or design criteria of this roadway is to be. With that being said, um you know, as we get into the engineering process here, you know, right now, the, the urgency here is. We have a time commitment with the federal government to um what we term obligate this funding. By September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That means we have to get into construction by that time. So we have a little over two years to get through preliminary engineering on this. There's been no real engineering done on this. There's been some napkin sketches on aerial imagery. Um some of the things you'd like you see on the screen here. Um just some general graphics, but as far as hard design, you know, any kind of testing or anything like that. None of that has been started or initiated by anybody for this section of the roadway. Now, and the trail, for that matter. Um so. Right now, what, what our goal is, is to um make sure that we have a commitment. From the local partners who have to take ownership of this roadway. Penn Dot can't take ownership of it. And at that point, w- we know then the project's viable because if we don't have a local partner, the project isn't viable. So our goal right now is to, to partner, uh affirm that partnership. And then be able to engage in, you know, advancing preliminary engineering. Um the minute we take the money, if the project stops being viable at any point, we have to return that money. So that's, that's the concern right now, is we wanna make sure that all of the pieces are in place. We initiate any acceptance of funding from the federal government. Um right now, we are uh July thirteenth, planning to select a design consultant. Penn Dot had received some statements of interest and are in the process of selecting the firm. At that point, we're gonna initiate a conversation with Federal Highway Administration about um adopting the funding. What we can do to get the funding started. The original discussion was we couldn't start until the grant agreement was executed. Because of some delays on the federal government's side, they're o- offering the opportunity to, to uh accelerate the funding for PE. So we will have a meeting on that and that's where we need to know by that point, which that meeting is July eighteenth. We need to know by that point whether the township is on board with this project. And after that, then we'll talk about, you know, uh negotiating a memorandum of understanding. Between the township and Penn Dot as the grant recipient. Not as the, we're not the project stakeholder. We're just, you know, the recipient of the, of the funds and administering it's. Under federal government standards. Um so. We, we just, right now, are looking for some, some commitment to, you know, yes, we think we can work out these details. Um, you know, and, and, you know, make sure our interests are protected uh with a memorandum of understanding. So. Uh once we get that comfort, we get that, that funding in place, we will start engineering at that point. You know, there'll be surveys done, there'll be traffic studies done. Um that's when the design criteria will be established. All of that will be orchestrated with Whitehall Township. This will not be a decision made and then it'll be forced on Whitehall Township. Whitehall Township will be at the table. Their engineers will be at the table. We will, we will sort that out. We will navigate that. And that will be the project going forward. So every step of the way, the township will be involved in this. Um, you know, from, you know, this is gonna be, you know, s- a significant amount of disturbance. As far as, as, you know, the NPDS permitting, we will need an NPDS permit for this site. Um we will also have to meet um the uh National Environmental Policy Act, which is driving all of the environmental decisions associated with this project. We have to make sure that we meet all of that criteria and that's everything from, you know, the soil testing. To noise, to cultural resources, to historic, to wetlands and waterways. Everything environmental and culturally related to this area will be thoroughly investigated and documented. To show that we meet all of the requirements set by the federal government under the, the NIPA Act. So, um. The decision-making, you know, like I said, you know, it's, we will strive to make this something that is maintainable. And not overwhelming to the township. The township's going to be part of the decision-making process. The township will also be, uh, uh, I would assume one of the named applicants because it is their facility. Um to, for the NIPD's permit. So there's gonna be sign-offs by the township. It's not something that, you know, we can blindside you with. This is something that we have to make sure we're negotiating because of our timeline. We need everybody at the table. We need everybody to agree quickly, you know, and so we are going to be an active partner. In this, only to help facilitate the process. Um I know there has been concerns about the speed limit and whether trucks are gonna be, you know, on this roadway. The speed limit's going to be established by the township. Um this is their roadway. So the speed limit, we, you know. An ordinance that needs to be passed, um that establishes that, that's, you know. ordinance that needs to be passed that establishes that, that's, you know, that's entirely up to you. We can implement traffic calming measures to ensure that's, you know, adhered to, you know, from a from a physical driving standpoint. But, you know, with the ordinance, you'll be able to enforce that on this roadway. The trucks, you know, this is a new facility with the proximity of the trail and pedestrian, high pedestrian use. This isn't eligible to be posted, this is eligible to be posted as a no-truck route. So we would probably market as accept local deliveries for, you know, the off-chance that somebody needs to get something through there. But for the most part, all trucks will be restricted from this roadway. So I think that's a brief overview of, you know, what what's planned here. You know, again, there's not a lot of information right now. We're trying to get to a point where we can start gathering information. And it's it's, what I've said in the past is it's it's a fluid project from a standpoint of this, you know, none of the decisions have been made yet as far as, you know, what this road's going to necessarily look like. So we we are open to, you know, comments, suggestion, you know, what 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 the township would like to see out here. And then also, you know, the section, we're talking now from, you know, the roadway is from the city line to Wood Street. And then the the photo that was the previous slide, I don't know if we can go back to that. That's the intended view of everything north of Wood Street. We we have some flexibility with the funding. We will, you know, as, once we get into initial design, we will develop, you know, some some better cost estimates with current unit prices for for construction activities. Everybody knows that, you know, the cost of everything has gone up in the recent six to 12 months. So the dollar's not stretching as far as it used to. So we will, you know, looking, be looking to immediately evaluate that and make sure, you know, that that, you know, we can build what we want to build. So but, you know, if there's a section that may, I'll say, suffer because of the economic conditions, this is the section that may get narrowed down into just the the section that you see where the bicyclist is, as opposed to having a pedestrian trail or some other configuration. So I hope that kind of gives you an understanding of of, you know, where we are in this process and, you know, the the, you know, the town certainly certifies that the township's going to have a say in all of this, and it's not going to be something that, you know, is developed without them them and their interests being represented. So if anybody has any questions, I'm sure I'm the one that's going to get the most questions. I'm I'm open to answer, and and Mike Rebert from the district is also on the phone as well.
I think Christine, I think at this time, it might be good to pick it back to the Whitehall Commissioners and the Whitehall Mayor to let them, you know, ask some questions about what they've heard. I know there's a lot of information there, but I think we're here today to help you understand what the project's about. So is, you know, if they, if if Joe Marks and or Mike Carrick will want to take a lead here or Phil, we we just want to make sure that we're getting your questions answered.
Rick, I'll I'll jump in here. I I got beaten up a bit back in the 1980s when we were attempting to buy the IRT. And I had a lot of people saying, you're wasting money, why are you doing this? And I I think, looking back on that, it was the right decision to to look forward and see what we can do to help the community here. And I I look at this at the same way. And we're having some very rigorous conversations in the municipal building about this. There are concerns about how much money we're going to have to spend and what the what's the benefit to Whitehall. And we we continue to talk about that. But I I believe in the end, it's going to prove out, looking back from 20 years or 15 years, that it was the right thing to do. I don't know if Christine, if you can tell us what this slide shows us, but, you know, would it potentially be that the the two-lane, one in each direction road, is that going to be closer to the river or or not? Is that part of what we get to determine?
I would say absolutely, yes.
That's correct.
So I I've been talking with with our Public Works people. What's the limit of of maintenance on this? How much are we going to have to do? How do we go about hooking into this road in a way that minimizes the amount of maintenance and maximizes the utility? We don't know what that is, and we're, we don't have anything to look at that tells us that.
I think, Mike.
I think we can help design this and minimize the amount of money it's going to cost us.
I think, Mike, though, the question was originally the amount of maintenance, especially when you were considering the trail, which in fact, we we never intended the trail to come to Whitehall, but if Whitehall wanted it, and if you still want it, we'd certainly stand by. But the reality is, Mike, the roadway will be designed to be a what I would consider a neighborhood-type road. That's what I'm envisioning along a trail. We don't expect this to be Fortin Avenue. But I do believe your neighborhood people, and those savvy enough to use this road, will come Fortin Avenue, Third Street, Park Street, especially as we're upgrading the interchange at Fortin Avenue and Wood Street. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of concern here, trying to calm a whole bunch of different items. But, Mike, the maintenance on this is the road maintenance, which in the beginning probably is snowplowing, right? I'm I'm confident you're going to snowplow this. But when you start asking for others, are you asking for how long will the Mecadon be be warranted? Or what what exactly is the question from from the folks in your Public Works?
Well, that that's part of the question. The the cost of the salt, the cost of of maintenance, they they look at it. And, you know, right now, they do have a concern about the the amount of maintenance that's going to have to be provided. But I think we have a better handle on that at this point. And I I know there are questions here. And I I'd really rather see some of the staff that have concerns step up and see how we can meet the the challenge here. And and apparently, we're not going to hear that. But I will continue to to find out what we can, what we can do to minimize any kind of maintenance, to minimize and and to utilize the 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 road, because we know we're going to benefit from having EMS more accessible and other things too, but I I don't want to do all the talking here.
Mike, I think one of the points that we'd like to hear is the maintenance issue, because a new road, in theory, a new neighborhood road, how much maintenance will be required? I know snowplowing. You mentioned no one wants to weed whack under a guide rail. Maybe this roadway won't have guide rails. Maybe it will on the property of the trail, which becomes part of trail maintenance. But I think at this point, those items need to be, we need to hear them so that we could make sure that in the design of the trail and as well as the road, we're doing as minimum invasive maintenance required. Because the county doesn't want a lot of maintenance either. Our Public Works Department isn't going to want a whole bunch either. The reality here is, let's talk about what those are. I know I talked to Mike Rebert, and he said the road would be eligible for liquid fuel funding support, which I don't know if that's roughly $4,000 hours a mile or whatever that might be. That would certainly be part of of this opportunity to help on the maintenance issue.
Another another concern, and and even more so than the the concern about the road, is the requirement that we, taking that, are going to have for NEPTUS problems. You know, we we need to be guaranteed that this is going to be dealt with, and again, with our cooperation. But there are, there are problems out there. We can't hide that.
No, Mike, definitely, that's why this meeting is here today. But, you know, if you look at the scales of justice, and I think we we started with almost 45 minutes of all of the positives and all of the investments and all of the things it's going to do for Whitehall, you know, and and that's where I put it on a scale, and I don't even think it's close. I think Whitehall comes out of this completely on top, without a doubt. It means you have to salt the road for a mile and a half versus all of the things that that the malls will now have increased ways of getting there. The Fifth Street Bridge will be back up and running. With all of this, part of this entire package, you have to not just pick at one little thing. There is no perfect anything in government, as you know, and I'm sure the board knows. And I'm sure, you know, we all remember when we we did a deal with the wall. These are all things that that happen, and you try to get the best you can. And having you be part on the table, as Christine said, right there from the beginning, this is going to be Whitehall at the table. This isn't going to be anything, and you have my word on that. And I know Mr. Ginder knows that when I tell him that, it means something. You will be at the table. And this is going to be, you know, what do you want to do here? How do you want to make this? What is the speed limit you want to do? All of this is is under your jurisdiction. So it again, you have to start putting this on a a scale and and looking at what you're getting for the minimum amount of what's happening on the other side.
This is Board President Marx. I don't mean to change the subject, but I'm also the most tenured member on the Copley Whitehall Sewer Authority. And has there any, has there any, has there been any thought into the interceptor that runs directly down that corridor? And the easements that are in place?
Absolutely. We we've met with Christine and PennDOT and all that. Nothing can be done without, as she said, engineering studies. Joe, believe me, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that is one of the things that we have to look at. And nothing can be done that doesn't go through our Conservation Commission, our Planning Commission, and all of that has to, and believe me, the federal guidelines are stricter than our local guidelines. So be assured that that that's not going to be a problem.
No, that's understood, Phil, but currently, we're under a licensing agreement with the railroad. There were negotiations with Mr. Jandel to have utility easements put in place, but they weren't honored yet. And what I'm getting at is, we went down and physically inspected the property south of our metering station, that is just north of Fairmont Ave. And, you know, it's the majority of this roadway, or a substantial part down to the Allentown border. I understand that this cartway is going to be 33 feet wide. I don't know what the normanclature of the trail is going to be, but is there going to be enough room with the current infrastructure because of those utility easements or railroad licensing agreements to get in there? Because speaking on behalf of the Sewer Authority, we need to have access to get to that interceptor, because that serves probably, I would say, 40% of Whitehall Township. We have three interceptors, but that is our main interceptor.
Absolutely. Rick, you you want to explain that to them?
I I, President Marx, I I can only add this. There is no intention with this project to negatively impact the already in-place utilities. However, the engineering and the sightline and the easements for those properties need to be engineered. But to me, your comment is really important, because it gets after, I think, a major concern beyond general road maintenance, and that is what else is already on that site. And I think that this is certainly something that needs investigation and engineering. I can't speak for the the Jandel family in terms of of easements, but I could speak as it relates, once we acquire, that we will work very closely with the authority to make sure that the easements are in place.
But I think that's important, Joe, that, I think that's important, Joe, that why you need to be at the table when we we make this agreement, and that would be a very, very important thing that we need to make sure is done.
Yeah, I feel it's important that, you know, because they are a stakeholder, our board needs to be, you know, comprised of what's going on here and how this may impact the authority, you know, moving forward.
Well, that's why we're inviting you to the table. This isn't going to be something that's going to be, I can remember sometime when UGI built a a gasp thing right under a bridge, and then they asked for permission. Yeah, this is not the way it's going to happen, Joe. You know that I won't let it.
Keep in mind, Joe, there's there's a, there's an interest on the county side as well with our authority, LCA, and the agreements with Allentown. And we understand the signatory responsibilities that we would have between you and our authority and the city of Allentown. So as we're getting into these discussions, I know that interceptor's out there, and it's a big deal. Just as I talked to Phil Ginder and regular, I shouldn't say regular, but stormwater's a big deal, and that's conservation district impacts. So I think we got to get together and get on the actual, what is there? How big's the road? How big's the trail? What are the easements that are required? We need the surveying, we need the engineering to make sure we can do what we hope to do. And what we hope to do is not harm Whitehall or the city of Allentown in this in this project. But, Joe, certainly, your authority must be at the table as well as your responsibilities as the as the Board President in Whitehall.
Hey, Rick, let me just jump in here.
Thank you.
Joe, you you mentioned something about the Copley Whitehall Sewer Authority and and not honoring easements that we had discussed in the past. If there's an issue that's outstanding, I've not been in in touch with my counsel. My counsel is Kevin Forwardy, and I know he's been talking with the the attorney at the the authority, the Copley Whitehall Sewer Authority. If there are issues that haven't gotten addressed, I've not heard of them within, I would say, with probably within the last year. So if there are issues that you are addressing or that you know are outstanding, please, please let me know what they are. I mean, because I I I I thought this was all resolved.
No, it was not yet, and and I brought this to the attention of our chairman, Mr. Hahn. And, you know, he brought it up, and and we both discussed it in depth. And it's something, you know, the railroad licensing agreements were never converted to the utility easements. And right now, we still fall under the railroad licensing agreements. I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but what I'm getting at is we need to have those converted, and we need to have those honored moving forward. So the authority has rights.
Let let's do this, because again, you're right. I don't think we want to get into the details here and to the weeds at this meeting. But why don't, I will call, I'm going to call Kevin Forwardy tonight. I'm going to find out what the status of those easements are and the license agreement is. And maybe you can do the same, and and your attorney's name, remind me, I who it is.
David Kahn.
No, I thought there was another attorney from EMS.
Yeah, Jack Stover. Jack Stover just announced his official retirement. So he he indicated to us that he is no longer going to serve the authority.
Okay, I will, I will have, I'll have. Okay, I will, I will have, I'll have Kevin um, reach out to your counsel and uh, we'll get, we'll get an update as to where this stands.
Fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why we're all here together tonight, to, to make sure we're all on the same page and that we're all going to be working together. And Phil Ginder, please, where are you? Say something.
Phil, one of your comments, Phil, earlier to me was the wall. And your disappointment, the way the wall was transferred in responsibility from RJ Korman to the um, to the township through Pendot via a PUC order. I, I, I spoke with Mark Jando and that's why Marx invited tonight. Because the Jandals were not privileged to any of that legal action. That was all handled prior to them purchasing uh, the property. So I want to make sure that there's not a sense out there of, of this wall is somehow tied to this project. I mean, structurally, I think there's a benefit with the wall being there, but I don't think it was a Jando-initiated issue. And Phil, I don't know if you have any other information. I know Phil Armstrong has some memory of this as well. Uh, I also was part of this and uh, the Jandals were not part of the uh, discussions when I went to Harrisburg uh, and sat with the PUC.
Well, I guess, you know, that's water, uh, water under the bridge or over the wall or whatever at this time. I bet, I, I think.
It may be Phil, but Phil Ginder mentioned it. So Phil, I'd like to hear if there's still a concern because tonight we want to move past that.
Well, just, just to clear that up quickly, my understanding of that at the time was that the PUC is not involved with private ownership of property. So at that point, Pretzel was out of that wall. And it was, the wall was just given to Whitehall. That, that's my understanding of how that happened. But you know, I don't want to get into that either. That's, that's long gone and less to learn.
Phil, as, as long as I could ask you, Phil, that you would not, uh, that after this call, if you have any unique questions, you contact Mark directly. Uh, because I don't think it's something that we as a project team here uh, have any knowledge or any information other than uh, we believe that it's solved and it's passed, but we don't want to come back to it. But if you have issues, you could always ask the question.
Well, then you could ask questions all day long on it. Uh, Pendot came down and said, that's your wall, Whitehall, and that's the end of that.
Yeah, and then we went down to Hamilton Street and we, yeah. I, I sat with you, Phil, remember?
And, and it was a horrible experience and, and I don't wish to get into that tonight. Uh, and the PUC made the ruling and that's it. A couple of questions I have, with all this, this new stormwater system that has to go in along here, that there's going to be empty four dollars that have to be spent years down the road. Uh, constantly cleaning up stormwater and stuff. You know, and, and Whitehall is going to be on the hook for that, you know, unless some type of maintenance fund can be established for, for over a period of years uh, to deal with some of these things. Because you know, the budget's the budget in Whitehall. We don't have a budget as big as the county or the state, of course. Federal government, unfortunately, we can't print our own money in Whitehall. But uh, you know, there's some really long-term costs here, plus whatever else gets dumped on uh, in, in unfunded mandates uh, to take more on along the river down there. Uh, another point I have is, have all the deeds been researched along that railroad property? Because I know when we took over the, the Ironton Rail Trail, we had to hire a special attorney from Eastern to go through. There were a lot of deeds that were left uh, with stones unturned and we had to clear up all those deeds. So I think that's pretty important to look at that, that we're not stuck with more, more legal expenses there. Making sure that we, that this property is actually owned and beaded right. Uh, the other questions I have, you know, I walked down there over the years and I was just down there the other week with Joe Marx. Like, you know, I, I, I questioned how, how, I look at this picture and they show a, a bicycle trail and a walking trail and I, I don't see a road there. I don't know how you can get all of that in down there in certain areas. And you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little gun shy that, that things will be done that, that really shouldn't be done just to get it in. Uh, the other one I have is how will all of this end at Wood Street? Uh, nobody seems to want to talk about Wood Street. Pendot wants to take Wood Street for, for uh, ramps and stuff coming off twenty-two. There's been talk about that. I don't know where we are with that. But what's, what's this going to do uh, when it comes out? You know, are we going to lose the American Legion, their building there? And, and other things along Wood Street and, you know, the Wood Street playground's just been whispered on the alley. Uh, you know, and we, we, we should get some definitive answers here, what's going to happen before we say yes or no. Uh, this trail maintenance, I might understand that the county is going to do the maintenance on the trail portion. Is that a yes or no?
That's a yes, Phil. I said, I, if it's, if that's the thing that's holding you back, I'll go out and weed whack it.
There you go.
And I'll watch it.
There's going to be horses allowed on this trail. Because if there are, we can get busted.
Phil, this is why we want you and Whitehall to be part of this.
Well, I'm, I'm just bringing up one.
See, it's going to be part of where you're at the table. It isn't going to be us or Pendot saying, listen, Whitehall, this is what you have to do. That's why we're bringing you right from the beginning.
Uh, the point is, I've been at the table many times before and a lot of times didn't have much to say because it didn't matter. And then the point I want to bring up, I don't want to get in that position with Whitehall Township. Uh, you know, money's a big thing right now and then you don't want to.
Believe me. Well, and listen, you were never at a table with, I was sitting at the head either, okay? And I'm at the head and you know I have never done anything to hurt Whitehall.
I, I understand and I, and I as much appreciate it. Uh, you just asked it for my comment. And now with this road, we're going to be getting, I'm, I'm a little concerned. We're going to have to put more police and state enforcement down there. And there's eighteen V-type vehicles that are coming in from other municipalities in the Whitehall. And it's going to take more police efforts from us. You know, we may have to put it on another one or two police. Uh, it just depends how much this gets used with, with uh, you know, people riding through on bikes and, and whatever happens to them. The big one is all this traffic from, that's supposed to come up through here, be it from the trail or from the road. What happens to Fordham Avenue and First Avenue, that corridor? All the way up to Bridge Street and including the entrance in the Race Street. What happens to that corridor? Does this just get built and, and we say to hell with that corridor, we'll deal with it later? Or I believe that something should be done with that corridor at this time. Because we, we keep on dumping the traffic in there. We're going to redo the Race Street Bridge and that's going to put more traffic in that corridor. And that, that's a serious problem in Whitehall, as far as I'm concerned. And, and I believe staff has, has a lot they'd like to say about that too. And one of the last things that I haven't noted about, now, nobody fall off your chair, put your seatbelts on. Any thought about just running a trail up there and forget the road? And let's get this D and O trail in and get all of that connected and forget the road. Uh, just a thought I have and, and now I'll move on and let somebody else make some comments. And Phil, you can ask me to comment again. I won't go this long.
Yes. This is Commissioner Warren. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I'm getting, I'm, I'm at an airport here, so I'm getting late to the, to the show. But the one question I did have, we're putting more traffic on the Third Street, with coming up Wood Street. Um, a project several years ago, the township acquired the, the home at the corner of Third and Grape Street. So that intersection could be widened to accommodate traffic. And at that time, the primary issue was uh, detours off of Route twenty-two when that widening was going to occur. Um, we, we bought the property, we're toward the building down and it sits there. And I know we're trying to get that intersection on the tip so that it can be widened. At the present time, a land to bus cannot make the, navigate the turn from Grape Street to Third Street without traffic having to back up. So that's a bottleneck and uh, yeah, I don't know if that was discussed earlier. That was one question I did have. And I think Phil touched on a few others, but uh, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Becky, I don't know if we have this on the long-range transportation study. Um, I just don't have the book in front of me. Can I ask, has, has Whitehall presented this? I'm, I'm hearing from Jeff Warren, they did. But I don't, it's just not jumping out at me as an initiative that we uh, placed on the long-range plan.
I know it was on the tip request a couple of years ago. It was on, I think, this year's, but uh, it just hasn't made it to the tip. It was on the Whitehall wishlist, but uh, it is. Yeah.
We don't have wish lists, we have priority lists. And, and so the, you know, I think um, maybe Mike would remember it. I don't, I don't know. Mike Rebert, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I believe it's on the long-range plan. It is not on the, the current tip. Um, yeah, it is, it, I remember during our, our, our long-range plan discussions, this is on there. Um, it's just not funded at this point. And I'll, I'll go back and touch on um, on the question about uh, Wood Street. And I believe, I, I don't have it available right now that I could pull it up. But um, the, the idea with Wood Street is that the Riverside Drive will come up and, and tie into Wood Street. Wood Street would um, where it currently bends at Front Street. Um, if you're headed down towards the river, um, it would be extended to the right of the uh, the Auto Motors building and tie into Riverside Drive. And then as you turn around and come back up, um, the off-ramp from twenty-two will, it is currently planned to go through the Wood Street Playground. So that, that would uh, come up right adjacent to where Wood Street is now. So we're going to need to relocate Wood Street with the uh, with the Route twenty-two project. And that relocation would take it to the opposite side of the American Legion. And ultimately, the goal is to uh, to line it up with Park Street.
It would not touch the American Legion. That stays.
Correct.
And the Route twenty-two project is going in no matter what this trail is.
Correct.
Mike Rebert, Mike Haracle, um, uh, you may not remember it, but I sent a letter to you a month and a half or so ago, uh, concerned about the uh, the corridor uh, that Jeff described. Um, it goes, uh, the, the request was that it be evaluated and uh, put on the tip. Um, I think it was all the way up to Bridge or it could have been up to Orchard. I'm not sure. Um, and I don't have it with me. But the uh, we, we were trying to get some attention uh, as a result of something that was sent out uh, requesting some information. And so we passed that along and I can uh, get that to you again tomorrow.
Are, are you, you're referencing uh, Third Street?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I do remember.
Okay.
It just comes down to a, a, a lot of priorities and, and not enough money to go around is what it comes down to. But um, yeah, I know that Grape Street, Third is, is on the long-range plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
How long-range roughly? Uh, Phil Ginder?
Well, we, the long-range plan goes out twenty-five years. Um, you know, it's, that's not to say um, it's going to be twenty-five years for that project to happen. Um, there's a lot of projects on there and some are more feasible than others. Purchasing a property and opening that area up is a huge plus. When we start uh, really evaluating which projects can move quicker. I have Google Maps up there that uh, that one on, on my computer that I'm looking at. And having that corner a lot open uh, goes a long way to uh, to allow us to not have to purchase additional right-of-way there.
We, we've also moved it back farther, Mike. It, it was a, a pretty steep descent down to the sidewalk. And we've moved it back, hoping to tease you into taking a look at it.
Sure.
Becky, I know you may be on. The next time we review projects uh, at the LVTS for long-range, not the tip, but long-range, will probably be what, two years from now? When we start to reevaluate the midpoint or the mid-range plans?
Uh, probably in the next year.
Okay, so. So to Phil Ginder's point, how long in the future? I think you're setting yourself up by what Whitehall's doing um, to be able to move this project quicker. But at this point, we don't have any authority to say that's going to happen uh, in this particular tip. But I do think we're going to evaluate again over the next um, year or two.
If, if I can jump in, this is uh, Pete Terry, Benchmark Civil Engineering Traffic Consultant for the Township. One of the things that's been a mystery to us from the start is, what are those traffic volumes going to be coming up on this new section of road? Are there any estimates at all? Um, because we really have no information at all to, to judge this.
I think Christine, uh, I believe it was Christine said it, it earlier. Um, you have to do these things as part of preliminary engineering and figure this out. Um, so you can, you know, design the road uh, in a way that's the best for the community. Um, but we cannot do any of that without the township's commitment to being part of the project. And then we have to return the money, which means we would never get any more federal funding into the region basically ever again. That's really the, at the end of the day, the stakes that are here. So we aren't going to have all the answers. That's ridiculous. That would have cut you out of the process and that was never the intent. In fact, Whitehall has been at the table, and I'll say it again, the entire six years, we have been putting together this project. So um, you know, we've always had a long list of questions. And that list of questions is going to grow as we go through the process of putting together the project. But we can't possibly know everything now, but we need to have access to the funds to figure that out. So you know, decisions can be made.
This is Chris, this, this is Christine Fry. I want to just chime in quickly. You know, Pete, I, you know, I, I appreciate the concern. Um, you know, everything that I understand about this project, it's, it's not intended to become a, a throughfare for, you know, um, commuters or a bypass for, you know, any of the other roadways. Um, you know, it, it may serve, you know, some of the, the users of the waterfront project. Um, but you know, we're going to keep this low speed, you know, traffic calming. It's not going to encourage use, um, you know, from, you know, diverting trips from, you know, adjacent routes. So um, I don't see this as a, you know, uh, massive volume of traffic. It'll be the users, you know, trying to access the trail. It'd be users trying to access the waterfront, but as far as a bypass, you know, it's, it's really not going to be established as a, you know, an ideal route for that type of activity. Uh, maybe for the local residents to work their way, the back way up to the mall. That's, you know, quite a possibility, but um, as far as, you know, generating a ton of new trips or diverted trips, you know, just to, to get around other routes, you know, especially with the connection to Fifth Street Bridge. Um, I, I just don't see that happening based on everything I understand about what this project is intended to be.
I certainly, this is Pete Terry again. I, I certainly appreciate that. And I know we're early in the process, um, simply the engineer asking the questions. Um, I live on the east side of Allentown and uh, I can understand the patterns over here and, and how traffic may uh, be diverted if there is a nice new route. You, you know, it's a concern to the township and that's why I raise it. So thank you.
This is Commissioner Warren again. Um, the topic of Wood Street, um, I'm sure when the final engineering is flush- The topic of Wood Street, I'm sure when the final engineering is flushed out, there will be stormwater management. We have the issue on Bridge Street, which there's a huge drainage area that channels down Bridge Street, but there's no stormwater inlet. So I just want to make the point that I'd like to see that incorporated, drainage incorporated into the Wood Street enhancements. Also, the Wood Street Playground, I guess, timing, you know. Widening, I don't know what the widening timeline is. But, you know, at some point, that park's going away. I don't want to see us being dragged down the, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road and still not knowing what's being done with Bridge Street. That we, you know, we can get some enhancements to the Fullerton Park District. I thought it was going to be involved with this project, but it sounds like it's more of the widening.
Correct, Jeff.
Right, yeah. So we, you know, we have a park down there that needs to be improved now, or we need to come to a consensus of where we're going to invest that money after the state takes that park away from us.
I think, Jeff, you jumped on late. And I think we talked a little bit about the stormwater issue, saying that part of the engineering does require us to bring in the Conservation District to do the reviews to ensure stormwater compliance. So that is part of the project. As far as the widening project relocating Wood Street Playground, it's, as you said, part of the other project.
Okay, Rick, thank you.
Certainly, Jeff.
Okay, I think if there's no other questions, it's getting late. I think we can wrap this up now. And I think everybody has all the information needed. And I thank everybody for being open-minded about this. And hopefully, we'll have Whitehall at the table.
Can I add one more question?
Sure. All right. You're like horsejack, you know, on the back of the room with the hand up.
I understand, I understand that. I know my boundaries. For everybody to understand where Whitehall's coming from here. I think the big question is, how does Whitehall say okay to any of this without knowing what kind of dollar amount we have to commit ourselves to? And not a dollar amount to get it done, but dollar amount to maintain what's ever going to be thrown in front of us? I don't know how a municipality commits to that when you don't have a solid, you know, are we getting an estimate, or are we just guessing at some type of budget for what it's going to cost us to take care of this? As somebody who has to vote to provide tax dollars for Whitehall, you know, I just don't know how you do it when you can't get a grasp on what kind of money it's going to cost us in a year's period.
I think that's answered very easily, Phil. The value of the homes around there are going up $14,600. The commerce that will happen around there is going to go up. The tourism that's going to be brought in is going to go up. The quality of life for the residents of Whitehall Township is going to go up. So I think, you know, there are so many positives. That's how you answer that question.
The problem is, we've got so many other things going up in the township. For sure, the police, the police are going to cost more. And, you know, we're on the verge of a paid fire department. If this volunteerism doesn't get any better, you know, there's so many other things coming at us here. And that's one of the reasons you're getting a lot of questions, so to speak. And then, my point is, please understand that.
And we do.
We do, certainly.
And that's why we want you at the table, Phil. That's why we definitely want you at the table.
Please understand that, you know, it's nice to know some dollar amounts, at least roughly.
But Phil, as I mentioned earlier, I need, well, I should say, I need. I think the team needs to know, you know, what is the extra mile and a half of roadway going to be in the long list of miles of road that you currently maintain? And then incrementally, you can figure it out.
And you also increase your fuel tax money by having that mile and a half.
So I think, I'm not going to sit and say I could do it exactly. But I do have faith in your team to be able to give a projected number of what they think the maintenance is going to be. And then, Phil talked about some economic enhancements. At the same time, I think the neighborhood and the commerce to get the neighborhood with Fifth Street, with the relocation of 22, the widening, the future McLaughlin Road Plans, I think this is all to calm traffic on the most southern end of Whitehall. And I think that's what we're looking at as well. Opportunities to keep the traffic calm.
Mr. Armstrong, I have a question. This is Commissioner Marks.
Yes, I know your voice, Joe.
Going back to Christine's presentation, she indicated that July 18th was sort of a date that they needed something from us. What exactly do you need from us?
We need your commitment. That's exactly what we need. We have everything lined up.
I think if we have, we have Mike Reber on? Mike?
Yes.
Mike, I think you, we've talked about this. Can you answer Joe Marks's question?
Sure, sure. We just need a good faith commitment. We don't need any ordinance passed or any memorandum of understanding in place. We just need a handshake agreement that, yes, Whitehall's willing to take on the roadway. And at that point, I think we can convince the federal government that we have a viable project, and we can commit some federal dollars to begin engineering.
Well, I hope everybody understands this. This is a very important decision for us to make on behalf of the citizens of Whitehall Township. And, I mean, I don't want to be the Debbie Downer here, but a verbal commitment, I mean, this is, you know, we need much more information to make an educated decision on this moving forward.
What more, Joe, do you need that we didn't give you tonight? With all of the facts that we?
Well, Phil, there's a lot of, there's a lot of outstanding issues here. I mean, stormwater.
Give us what you need, and we'll make sure you get it.
It was a lot of things we talked about already, you know, stormwater management.
We answered that.
Engineering. Well, yes, Phil, I agree. You did answer it, but it's still open-ended because there's a lot of things that, you know, this is all preliminary. There's a lot of things that may be discovered moving into the future that could complicate this. And by us making a verbal commitment, and I understand that it's important that this move forward, but what if we get to a point where we made that verbal commitment, and we run into something, or you run into something, your committee, that you can't overcome? And then, we as a community are committed to this? Do you understand my concerns?
No, I'll be very honest with you. Because I think we are looking at all of the things that have to be done through the engineering study that Christine was trying to explain will be done, and will be done correctly. Will meet all of the requirements necessary. So, and the burden of doing this construction is not Whitehall Township. Never has been, never will be. But you will get all of the benefits. And what you're doing here, if you don't do this, you know, let's look at the other side. Becky Bradley tried to say it as nice as possible. But if we lose this federal grant, then goes the federal money. And there goes lots of projects down the drain. And that's a fact. Well, okay, well, then you have to kind of look, remember when we did garbage? I don't know if you were on there, but that board meeting was packed with people that hated the way we were going to change things. But again, we had to make a decision what's best for everybody, based on everything. Not just, yeah.
No disrespect, I understand the levity of the situation. Mr. Gross, are you on?
Jack Gross? Yep, I'm here.
A legal question.
Yep.
How can we make a verbal commitment? I mean, is this even legal? I mean, who says yes? Who answers the question by July 18th? Can you answer that question for me?
So what I'm hearing that the request is, is that somebody, and I don't see at this point that it really can be any formal action by the board. It could certainly be a motion by the board, but that it would be, and I did ask and heard late today, and I'm waiting to see it, but that there was something from the mayor of Allentown along these lines. I'd like to see what the mayor of Allentown said. It was not from Allentown City Council, it was from the mayor. But it would be likely something from the mayor, or could it be from you? Or it could be from you and the mayor together that says the township is willing, willing to proceed with this project, subject to negotiating a mutually agreeable memorandum of understanding, and subject to the township participating in the design process, as was described here, and agreeing to the, to the outcome of that process. That leaves some contingencies, but it leaves quite a lot of contingencies. But it sounds like, from what I heard, that is what they're looking for. Not formal action to dedicate a road, or to approve an agreement that doesn't, or memorandum that doesn't exist.
Fair enough. Well, thank you for that answer, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions. I mean, I'm sure you'll agree.
I wasn't telling you to do it. I wasn't telling you to do it. You asked me what the process was, and I, well, would be. That's what I heard tonight. And I'm certainly open to someone on the other side saying otherwise. But that's what I heard. That's what I heard. And maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure.
Ms. Bradley, Executive Armstrong, who would we give this answer to? I mean, we have to talk to somebody to give the verbal commitment if, you know, our board elects to do this.
Well, it has to go through PNDOT, Joe, because they're going to be the ones responsible.
Yeah, Christine Frey.
Okay.
And then, we're also a project partner since we were the grant recipient. So we need to be CC'd on everything, and we're still a partner at the table. So we may or may not have comment. But, you know, you can always give me a call if you want to talk more.
All righty. Well, I guess that partially answered my question. I'm still a little confused, and forgive me. I just see this, and I just want to make sure that this is all legal and above board. And my only concern is, if we make a verbal commitment, how far does that take us into the swamp if there's underlying situations that come about? I mean, making this commitment, does this mean that the township is completely obligated to accept this and accept dedication moving forward? Or is this just preliminary? And this is just sort of, okay, go in and do your pre-engineering, see what, see where we're at, see where we land, and then, are hard decisions made by our board? Am I correct in the way I'm proposing this, or?
Joe, I'm not sure if that was directed at me, but I'll try and answer it.
It's directed at whoever wants to answer.
Well, I'll take a shot, based on, and again, based only on what I've heard and what I know. I would say it is preliminary, because the board would ultimately have to approve both this memorandum of understanding that we heard about, and would have to dedicate the road. At the same time, I would strongly recommend, as township solicitor, that the township not give that, what, you know, the word you used, preliminary indication that they're going to proceed with this, unless that's at least the current intent to do it. Right? So, but it is not the final step. The legal action that the board would need to take would come, the formal legal action would come later, which would be the, the resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding and the ordinance to dedicate a road.
I have a technical question. How do I go about, do I poll the board? Because we can't vote in a venue like this. Do I poll the board and see if it's the will of the majority for, to give them an answer? Or is this just a decision made by the mayor, or myself, or both parties? Or, you know, I've never been in this position before.
So, so there are, I mean, this is a public meeting, public advertised meeting. The board can't, you know, pass an ordinance tonight or a resolution. Neither was advertised. You could certainly ask if there is, if anyone wants to make a motion, if board members want to comment on it, that's all perfectly appropriate at a public, at a public meeting. Alternatively, you know, you or you and the mayor, as I said, I've asked, I found out about this late today, that I believe Mayor Turk and perhaps Mayor O'Connell have sent something on this. I've asked to see what that is. I think it's appropriate that Whitehall see what the city, the city mayor or mayors have said about this. But there is also certainly the possibility that the mayor or the mayor and you together, based on what you know, could make that commitment. But that commitment would be, as I said, it would have to be subject to formal later approval at two points. One at the memorandum of understanding stage, and two at the ordinance for dedication stage.
What would happen if we made this commitment, and then, down the road, we, the board, the board's will decided not to take dedication of this roadway? How does that obligate us legally? Or does that bind us whatsoever to this? And I'm just, I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer here. I'm just looking into the legal aspects of this. Does this commitment change things down the road? I'm only one of seven. I mean, there's six other members that could vote against this in the future. You know, there's no way to predict what could happen.
Can I ask a question of Christine? Christine, in terms of going hard, when does the township of Whitehall have to go hard in their decision as to whether they're going to be a part of this project?
I mean, so we are, kind of right now, is just trying to get, you know, an understanding of the, I'll say, the deal breakers. You know, if there's, if there's somebody out there that is absolutely going to say no to this going forward, that we're never going to get a majority on this, that's what we need to know now. Once we get into preliminary engineering, and we start understanding the site, and everybody starts getting the information about what we're learning out there, and getting into the design details, at that point, we'll be formulating the MOU. Information will be known at that point. Things could be bulleted in there as, you know, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, whatever. Documenting it that way as to, these are our requirements as Whitehall Township accepting this roadway. At the end of preliminary engineering, after we have received our environmental clearances, is the point where we have to make the land transaction, where the right-of-way dedication takes place? That can't happen until the environmental clearance process is done, because everybody needs to know what they're accepting. So it's, it, there's a stepped process here that nobody's asking, you know, you to accept something completely unknown. We know there's, I'll say, risks out there, because, you know, we don't know, you know, once we start surveying this, or, you know, testing. But for the most part, when projects encounter those issues, we're able to resolve them and work through them. And so, when I say that the northern part of the project, from Wood Street to Race Street, is fluid, is if we get into the areas, you know, that are south of Wood Street, and we encounter something, we may have to divert some funds, you know, we're, you know, intended to do something north of Wood Street to be able to resolve those. So it's not that, you know, if we encounter something, we are going to work together to resolve it. I'm going to circle back to a comment, I think Phil Ginder had asked, you know, well, you know, why don't we just make the trail from, you know, the city line up to Race Street, and be done with it, and forget about Riverside Drive? Because the grant application stated there's going to be a roadway involved, at least up to Wood Street, we have to adhere to that. If we change what is, the project is defined as, and the Office of, I don't even know that OST, the Federal Highway Administration, USDOT, have put together a fact sheet that has a statement about what this project is, and we cannot violate that definition. So just putting in the trail will not meet that definition. And so, that's why. Riverside Drive itself is so important to all of this and and why we, you know, need to understand if if there's absolutely no way the township's gonna accept this, you know, i- if if we have some board members who are, it doesn't matter what we say or what we do out here, we don't want this roadway, we need to know that now. That's that's what we're at right now. And and then, like I said, we're gonna step through the process. As information becomes available, everybody will be keep informed. As apparently MOU, more information will be known. And at that point, that's when it becomes legally binding. And then certainly the next level of legal legal binding is the right-of-way acceptance. So when when the right-of-way plans are prepared and the transaction goes, that's when it's it's locked down and and we're moving into construction.
Great, thank you. Thanks, thanks for that response. I would just say one thing to Joe Marks, Joe. I I think you're right. I think one of the first things that the township of Whitehall needs to do is they need to analyze this from the standpoint of if if, just as Christine said, if this road runs from Furnace Street in Allentown all the way up to Wood Street, what is the cost, what is that cost gonna be for maintenance? And it's a brand-new road, it's a brand-new trail, so maintenance should be pretty limited as uh as Rick was saying earlier to snow removal. Snow removal plus other issues, which include uh stormwater management, which you've discussed. So wh- why not, I mean, your public works team get together and analyzes from what is that cost going to be? And come to that conclusion quicker, because I gotta tell you, um I I I've looked at this project and I've seen the hard work that uh the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission through both Tracy and through uh Becky have done, and they put a lot of work, effort, sweat into this thing, and and I think everybody believes this is gonna be a fantastic project. One one thing that was mentioned is a great trail. Uh it's a great trail for a number of reasons, one of which is, you know, we've all gone through a pretty rough two years with the pandemic. Uh stress is uh probably at the highest levels we've probably seen in our lifetimes. And to have people out on trails like this is gonna be just amazing. And to do what Rick was saying and then taking this from Race Street up to Cementon would be fantastic. So there are so many positive things about this project, but I think you need to right now, not wait, you know, even a even two weeks or three weeks, but I think right now you need to analyze what you believe is going to be the cost to maintain this road. And I certainly believe uh based upon the the residents of of Whitehall that they are gonna get one one heck of a project that's gonna be uh I think the envy of a lot of people throughout the state, not only throughout the valley. So uh that that that's what I would do, because I I think quite frankly, if I'm the, if I am Christine, I I think getting that commitment earlier than later is gonna be a lot, a lot more positive for this project.
If we're we're quiet now, but uh I know everybody's thinking hard. Uh we have a a board meeting on uh July thirteenth. We have some time to uh think about what we've heard tonight and and uh try to develop some uh additional opportunities to to try to straighten our heads uh about what we want to do. Uh and if we uh wanna run into an executive session, because I think this would qualify for that. Jack, am I correct about that? There could be an executive session because we're looking at the prospect of buying land.
I I I believe that's possible and I can confirm that, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm wondering if um, you know, letting this settle a little bit and think about it some more and get more uh good or bad uh uh things in uh turning them over. Uh maybe that would be a a better way to uh to move forward, Joe. I'm I'm just I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just thinking uh like one other person, that it may be reasonable uh not to jump to a a decision right now.
I I I can't agree more, Mayor. I think we need time to digest this and I think we need to sit down as a board and discuss this. And I think you're right, uh we don't have a lot on our agenda for our regular meeting. Uh the second weekend's July. I think we need to sit down and and talk about this. I don't know. I'll leave it up to Mr. Gross whether or not there should be an executive session or we can speak publicly about it. Uh I I think more needs to be discussed on our side. Uh no disrespect to anyone, we, you know, you've been heard and uh we'll we'll take it from there. Any other comments by the board? Anyone else have anything to say?
This is Commissioner Roman.
Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
I just have a a question. When we say uh we're being invited to sit at the table, um what does that entail? Is that going to be a committee of our Whitehall Board? Uh 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 ad hoc committee, is that going to be one representative? Is that gonna be just the mayor? What does it mean when we're being invited to the table? What does that look like?
We meet with the United States Department of Transportation as part of this project because of their uh twenty-one-plus-million-dollar investment. Um and so uh Christine is our project manager through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. So it's USDOT at the table, it's the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, who is the grant recipient. Um and it would be you. How you decide to come to the table is up to you. Um and so if you want it to be the mayor and someone else, you can certainly have that right to do so. And that is of your purview. But these meetings are handled um in accordance with federal rules and regulations. Um and I think that's an important uh measure to to note here uh that these are very serious and very important meetings um that happen to ensure that the project is built to the highest standards um and that all of the rules and regulations of the federal government are being followed. This is Christine, I I will, I'll, this is Christine, I'll I'll go a step further. I mean, that that is from the the um
I'll say the stakeholder representation in those meetings, but um, you know, if you know, a- as we go through the design process, you know, i- if the township, you know, ha- has a a sense of, you know, they want, you know, me to come in with the design team or whatever to make presentations, um you know, we can arrange that, it's not you know, so I don't know if you, you know, it it'll be up to the township to decide whether they wanna committee separate for this or or how how they wanna interact with the design team, so that's, that's gonna be largely up to you. But there, you know, there is separate meetings that Becky's talking about that i- it's more about the process and and, you know, are we adhering to our requirements associated with the grant? So uh and the township is certainly, you know, allowed to attend those meetings as well as a partner in this, so.
Okay, I was just, I was just wondering, you know, exactly what the mechanics of that representation would look like and how would it, you know, from from a township perspective, who's on that board and what what weight or what authority do we have to make comments or suggestions or recommendations or revisions or, you know, what, what does that look like? But um I just think the idea of coming to the table or being part of that discussion is very important and I like that idea a lot. So thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from our staff or professionals? I guess with there being none, a- anyone else? Well, then I'm gonna close this for comments tonight and I would like to have a motion to adjourn if I could possibly have that. I didn't hear that.
I'll move, Joe.
Okay, uh who was that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, Randy, okay. Thank you, Mr. Tia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roman. Uh well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all the information and have a great night.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.